Okay, I would like to, excuse me, I'd like to welcome everyone to the St. Charles County Council meeting. I'd like our Director of Finance, Mr. Snar, to lead us in the invocation and Council Member Mike Klinghammer will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
You join me in prayer, please. Father, we pause tonight and Father, we want to thank you as we've concluded a time that our nation stops and just Father pauses to give thanks for the ways that you have blessed us as a nation. God, we thank you for the way that you've blessed this county and Father, we thank you for those who serve this county. God, as we move from a season of Thanksgiving to the Christmas holiday, God, we just want to thank you for the blessing that you've provided to us in your Son and the gift that you've given us through him. So it's through him tonight, Father, that we ask you to bless this meeting and we ask all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Joe Cronin.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Brazel.
Here.
Councilmember Dave Hammond.
Here.
Councilmember Terry Hollander.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Ehlum.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Klinghammer.
Here.
Councilmember John White.
Here.
First on our agenda tonight is public comments. We will allow speakers to approach the council on any topic. Each speaker has a limit of three minutes and please remember to fill out a speaker's card so that we'll have a record for your name. Okay? Public comment, please. Anyone? Right behind the microphone over there, sir. Yeah, we'll use that one.
Right in the middle.
Right in the middle, that podium there.
There you go. Yeah, I'm John Dougherty, live on Prawley Lane and I ask you all, before you vote on the proposed changes to Prawley Lane, to drive out to Prawley and drive from Coonsie to Prawley Court, the area being discussed. And I'd like for you to drive it like everybody else does, about as fast as you can go and you'll find that you really can't exceed the speed limit very much because of the curves you have to slow down for. And it's a natural speed control. Then I'd like for you to look at the plans where these curves are removed or modified and how much faster you could drive with those curves not there. And that's the way people will drive it. And for people who live on Prawley, backing out of our driveway onto Prawley, it will be much more hazardous and dangerous for us. I wish you would all consider that.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else to speak on this topic?
My name's Wayne Tucker, I live at 550 Prawley Lane and just want to be in agreement with John Dougherty here on some of the points he's made. But some of the other ones we have there is the loss of some of the property we have. By taking the curve, the last curve out, will eliminate forty feet or more of the Hackman property there. That property was bought with the intention of putting another quality home on that end of the street, which will be impossible if that road, if that curve is taken out. And like John said, the speed will increase dramatically if those two curves are gone. And in the morning, when Highway 94 is backed up to Prawley Lane, the drivers on 94, if they know they can cut through without having to slow down for the curves, believe me, they will do it. If that's a straight line shot through there. And they will not be doing the thirty miles an hour that's on there now, I guarantee you. I've lived there since seventy-five and the curve is the only thing that slows those people down. And people that aren't familiar with the area, if they don't slow down, they're off the road. If that curve is taken out with a straight section where they don't have to hit the brakes, I don't know what's going to happen at the end of that road because when Prawley ends up there, it goes into the neighborhood. I mean, I've seen it too many times, that they'll go right through there. And like John said, the backing of our driveways will be hazardous. We bought into this neighborhood because it's a bit of rural ambiance in a city. If this road's put in there, that's going to be gone because they're going to take out old growth trees that we have and the charm of the neighborhood and that's what we don't want to see. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to comment on Prawley Lane? Chairman.
I'm sure all of you have been to national parks or state parks. You go there for the beauty. I am talking about the aestheticism involved in this so-called project instead of an aesthetic, beautiful piece of property. As in National Park, people go to see and enjoy, we have been turned into a project where they will straighten, widen, take out the curves and almost all of the trees that you see along the roadway there will be taken out. We have counted up to thirty to forty trees that will go so that we can see better. Why? To see what? The road goes nowhere. It's a little strip between Coonsie and Prawley Court, leading only into Heatherbrook, a subdivision. They want to give us sidewalks. The sidewalks go nowhere. They stop at Heatherbrook and Heatherbrook doesn't have sidewalks. It makes no sense. The whole project is somebody's idea of spending federal money, which I think you have to supplement, and we have been chosen to be ruined and destroyed and it makes no sense at all. We're like a little strip of heaven. We've lived there fifty years, our neighbors have been there fifty-six years, others have been there thirty-nine, et cetera, et cetera. We chose that spot for its beauty and now it's being taken away from us. And what are we getting in return? A highway that will speed up traffic. There is no benefit to the people on Prawley Lane, so please don't tell us that we are being improved and upgraded. That is complete nonsense. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else to comment on the Prawley Lane project, which would be part of Bill number 4,028, I believe? Okay. All right, public comments on any other topic.
Good evening. My name is Eric Martin. I'm an attorney for St. Charles Tower. I'm speaking on behalf of St. Charles Tower, asking this council to approve Bill number 4036. This is a renewal of a conditional use permit that is for a cell tower at highways Z and N. It is for a monopole tower, not the tree design. This is one that this council previously approved. We think that it's ideally located in the commercial area. It is needed to close a gap in coverage for a carrier and we obtained a variance so that we could position this close to a water tower and a tree line so that it minimizes any visual disruption. So we are here to answer any questions and address any concerns when that matter is considered. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments on Bill number 4,026? Okay, seeing none, other public comments.
Good evening. My name's Doug Teeman. I am with Pickett, Ray &amp; Silver. I am here to discuss Bill number 4035, which is rezoning. If there are any questions on that bill, I'll be happy to answer those. I am here with the property owner, which is Bob McBride, and we would be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments on Bill number 4,035? Okay, any other public comments? Okay, seeing none, that closes the public comments section of our meeting. Next up is an oral report from our county executive.
No report this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Next up is the consent agenda. Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been approved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda passes. Next up is bills for introduction, beginning with Bill number 4,026.
Bill number 4,026, requested by Steve Elman, sponsored by council as a whole, an ordinance adopting and appropriating the fiscal year 2014 budget for St. Charles County, Missouri.
Okay, this is the budget that we have had several work sessions on. I assume that the changes that you mentioned to me, Joanne, are included in this bill, correct? Okay, all right. Any questions on the budget in Bill 4,026? Yes, Mr. Cronin.
I'd like to thank Mr. Snar and Ms. Slakem for all the questions that they answered for me. And this is incredibly complex budget and even after looking at it for three years, I still had a lot of questions and I appreciate all the hard work and time and due diligence that you folks put into this.
I second that. That's a huge, huge project and, you know, making, you know, us, or giving us the opportunity to understand the process is very, very important. Any other comment on Bill 4,026? Okay, move on to Bill Introduction, Bill 4,027.
Bill number 4,027, requested by Bob Snar and Wayne Anthony, sponsored by council as a whole, an ordinance amending Section 120.190 and adding Section 405.616, ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, OSCCMO, relating to compensation for the Board of Equalization and compensation for the Board of Zoning Adjustment.
Okay. Questions or comments on Bill 4,027? Mr. Cronin?
I had made a couple suggestions to Joanne and since we're introduced and now we can just discuss about this. One is, we had a lot of attendance problems when I was an alderman and one of the ways we solved those problems on these boards was if you didn't get paid, if you didn't show up. And since these boards do not require a lot of work in general outside of the meeting, I would like the county to entertain that idea. Additionally, while I am not complaining for the last two years, most, almost two years that I've served a planning and zoning commission, I haven't gotten a nickel for suiting up and driving in and going to the meetings and I would like to see that whoever replaces me next year on that commission might be considered compensated for coming into those meetings, just like any other member of the Planning and Zoning Commission is. And while I'm not here to debate that now, I would just like the administration to kindly look at those two considerations.
I did get your email today and I didn't get a chance to talk to you, but I will let Mr. Ellis know about your request to modify this so that people are only paid for the meetings that they show up. And on the other issue, I think we're probably going to have to do some research into whether or not there's any kind of prohibition in the charter and in the state constitution or whether it can be characterized outside of the work of the council. But if it's not prohibited, do you want that in your bill amendment as well?
I think it's something we ought to consider. I mean, I know how much time it took for me. Those meetings last as long as these meetings and to drive all the way in and not be compensated like the rest of the members of that board, I think is not fair to the council member. And I don't want it till after I'm out of there. So I'm looking out for Dave Hammond.
Well, Mr. Hammond certainly appreciates that. Any other discussion on Bill number 4,027?
I got a question.
Yeah, Joe.
On this, I'm trying to understand this a little bit better. What is the, for planning and zoning, is it fifty dollars a meeting? Is that correct, Joanne?
Yes.
And so the Board of Equalization is five hundred dollars a month, right?
Yes.
And the Board of Equalization meets once a month? If they meet?
Oh, no. The Board of Equalization meets constantly from May through August and then they meet fairly regularly in the off months to deal with lagging properties that have to be considered, that have appeals or that have been kicked back by the State Tax Commission for review.
Okay, so, I mean, and that's fine. I mean, it's well deserved, but I think that it's fifty dollars, it's fifty dollars a month for planning and zoning. And I'll tell you, I've never served on a planning and zoning board because it takes a lot of time. And it takes as much time, as Joe said, as it does doing this in some cases. So I just wonder if fifty dollars, you know, because are you going to gain any more interest from folks if, I mean, is fifty dollars a month even worth, it wouldn't even be paying my gas money to drive out here, you know? And so I just wonder, that seems really low for that. That's all, you know, planning and zoning is the most time-consuming board that we have as far as, unless the equalization board, but it just seems really low to me. That's all I'm saying.
The Board of Equalization, you almost can't be employed in a full-time job that requires a forty-hour day commitment and be on that board. I mean, it's very difficult for the county executive to find people who have both the knowledge about property and the time commitment that they can make to serving on the Board of Equalization. So it's clearly the most time-consuming board in the entire county. Of course, you know, present company accepted. So beyond that, you know, probably planning and zoning is the next most and we've not had a complaint from any of the board members that I know of, but we can...
No, I'm just saying, it just seems, I know that equalization takes time too, but just fifty dollars a month just seems, I mean, it's not, it's either not worth paying them at all or paying them something that's a little more, has a little more substance to it, but that's just my perspective.
You have a really good planning and zoning commission with a lot of very good, dedicated people and I think possibly one thing that might work is if you bumped it up to a little bit more money, but then made it where you didn't get paid if they didn't show. And the overall budget may be about the same, you probably have better attendance. So, just an idea.
Mr. Chairman. Yes.
Do you know when the last time we raised those? I think they've been set there as long as I've been around.
I think that the fifty dollars is the original compensation from when we became a charter accountant.
Hundred bucks.
From ninety-three. I don't know that it's ever changed.
I think you're right. It's not changed since I've been here and that's been eleven years.
Planning and zoning.
And, you know, the Board of Equalization, that's one of those jobs, they, you know, they're probably a little bit overpaid on some years where you don't have, you know, reassessment. But then on the next year, they're grossly underpaid because every other year, they have spent a lot of time. So if you all are interested in looking at those and making some adjustments, I certainly would support that.
I mean, I would. I think planning and zoning should make a little bit more money, make it worth a while. And I agree with Joe. I think if they don't, on any board, if you don't make the meeting, you don't get paid.
Well, why don't we look and see what some of the other, you know, like St. Louis County and Jackson Counties, planning and zoning board members are getting.
So we'll do a little research on that and then come back next meeting with some...
With whatever amendments, Mr. Cronin wants for that.
Thank you. Any other comments on this particular bill? Okay, let's move on to introduce Bill number 4,028.
Bill number 4,028, requested by Steve Elman, sponsored by council as a whole, an ordinance approving the transportation improvement plan for fiscal years 2014 through 2016 and corresponding intergovernmental agreements.
Okay, questions and comments on Bill number 4,028? Yes?
Yeah, John Greif, who was going to be here and give you his usual rather in-depth presentation, but he was sick today. So he will be here at the next meeting to do that same thing and if anybody would like a private meeting with him to see this before, that can be arranged as well.
Do we have any other information?
He wanted to come, but he didn't want him to come.
Do we have any other information about this?
The Prawley Road one.
The Prawley Road one that they're talking about? I mean, I'm looking at the G I S aerial overlays on this and I can see where it runs into Coonsie, but I don't see where it's actually going to join back up with Prawley. That doesn't look like it joins anywhere in an easy manner. It looks like it's going to cut between sort of the current Prawley where it curves and Pearl Ridge Court. It's kind of what I'm understanding from what I'm looking at here. Looks to be the only place to really join up in there.
Right.
It's coming to a tee right from that acre, coming from, taking that curve out, that last curve.
Right.
And then it tees, Prawley Lane, sharp right, and then Prawley Court, Prawley Court.
So it's going to tee at Prawley Court or it's going to tee at where, at the...
It's going to tee at Prawley Court.
Okay.
That's right. That's our answer.
Councilmember, can we just go ahead and get you the plans for this? Because I think it might help rather than to kind of...
Okay, I think...
It's not a, well, I'll leave it go at that.
Well, we can promise you folks what we'll do is that at the next meeting, we'll have Mr. Greif explain things to us and take a look at the project and along...
Yeah, that would have happened tonight if he was here.
Sure.
And like I said, if you don't want to wait to the last minute, you want to see it before, we can arrange that.
Is there a timeframe on getting this one approved? I mean, or is there a crunch that, timing-wise?
Like, does this one have to be a part of this in two weeks or can we wait on this particular part of it?
What you're looking at tonight is simply the tip, the plan itself. You will have subsequent opportunities to vote on that particular, on any of these particular projects when you approve contracts for them. So this isn't the last say by any stretch of the imagination.
Yeah, this is, from what way I understand, this is the long-range planning for the next two or three years.
Correct. Three years.
I just hate to have staff go forward on a plan or to go down the road of...
It's already under design and there's been a public meeting about it and these folks were in attendance to that, I believe.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Cronin.
Just as a little bit of assurances to you folks, my mother and father live on a county road very similar, like yours have had a very similar project approved. And there's also another one going through in my district right down the road. This is just a plan. This isn't anything cut and stoned yet. The county highway department is very, very good by working with landowners to try to appease you and make you happy with the final results of that process. So Mr. Greif is very good at what he does and I just want to let you know that, you know, this is part of a process. Make sure that your comments and your photos go to them and I'm sure they'll try to put your considerations into the final design.
Can you come on over and hold him down?
The impression we got talking with the county highway department was that this is a done deal and the only way it's going to change is if at least four of the council members plus Mr. Elman vote against it. So, and that's the impression we were under, that this is a done deal. Now, if that's different, it'd be nice to know.
We understand that's why you're here tonight, you know, is to express your opinion.
Well, we have been told things. It's not just our opinion. I was, I said, what would it take to stop this? And I was told by Mr. Bosdick, it would take a hundred percent of people being against it, which makes no sense, or the twenty percent of the money that you all put into it would be not given. They were the two things that he said could stop it. Otherwise, we have no power.
We thank you, people, for your concern and we certainly will look into it.
Okay.
Yes.
One thing, just to you folks, you're right, stopping it sooner than later always going to help you out. I mean, that's the facts because whether or not who's on this board and whenever it comes through, you don't know. So, and it can be pulled out of the project, just this line, and it can be re-added. If there's, whoever district this is, I'd be concerned because I would not want those trees removed either. That's, it looks to me that that gives that neighborhood the integrity that it gives it, so I would not want my trees cut down either.
Mr. White?
Yeah, it's in my district. And if it's a project that's not severely needed, I would not necessarily support it.
All right, we will move on to...
Mr. Chairman, if I could make one other comment.
Sure, Mr. Bamer.
Councilmember Cronin asked a question that I think maybe some others may have and I'd like to address that. There is included in the plan a three million dollar appropriation for economic development. Mr. Cronin's question was whether or not those dollars were committed to specific projects or if they could be shifted to anything. It's my recollection that they are earmarked for three separate projects, one of which is in St. Peters on Youngerman Road, another in the city limits of Wentzville, which is an extension of a road or street in an industrial park where Wentzville hopes to attract a automobile supplier for General Motors Plant. And another long, old highway end, I believe it is, that you may have seen where Menards was interested in putting in a project out in Lake Angeles. The road board took a position and we agree with that position that those three projects were graded appropriately and would be funded. However, we felt that it should be only if those economic development projects show up. So what we did was we set them aside in a fund and if, for instance, the auto supply or auto parts supplier becomes a reality, then in fact, we can go ahead and shift those money into a specific project for that. So they are earmarked for those three. They were graded along with the other projects, they scored well, but we didn't think it was appropriate to simply approve them on the wish come. We wanted to see the projects actually take place.
Thank you. All right, moving on to Bill number 4,030 for introduction.
I think we need 4,029. 4,029, requested by Steve Elman, sponsored by Terry Hollander, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute two subaward agreements between St. Charles County and East West Gateway Council of Governments for receipt of grant funding, one for St. Charles County to procure video downlink for regional law enforcement flight operations and the other for St. Charles County to employ an intelligence analyst for the St. Louis Region Fusion Center.
Okay, questions or comments on Bill number 4,029? Okay, seeing none, we move on to Bill 4,030.
Bill number 4,030, requested by Tom Neer, sponsored by council as a whole, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute an agreement with the City of Darden Prairie for certain law enforcement services, including patrol services and enforcement of certain municipal ordinances relating to police services.
Okay, questions or comments on Bill 4,030? Okay, seeing none, we move on to Bill 4,031 for introduction.
Bill number 4,031, requested by Steve Elman, sponsored by council as a whole, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute agreements for advocacy and lobbying services.
Questions and comments on Bill 4,031? Seeing none, we move on to Bill 4,032.
Bill number 4,032, requested by Rich Chrismer, sponsored by Terry Hollander, an ordinance approving intergovernmental agreements with Missouri Secretary of State for receipt of an election efficiency grant in the amount of thirty-one thousand, three hundred and thirty-five dollars and for the receipt of a HAVA, Help America Vote Act, operations grant in the amount of forty-five thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five dollars.
Okay, questions or comments on Bill 4,032? Seeing none, we move on to Bill 4,033.
Bill number 4,033, requested by Steve Elman, sponsored by Terry Hollander, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a professional service agreement between the County of St. Charles, Missouri and the United States Attorney's Office for the Eastern District of Missouri in conjunction with the Missouri Highway Patrol as fiscal agent and John Montevani as an independent contractor.
Questions or comments on Bill 4,033? Seeing none, we move on to Bill 4,034 for introduction.
Bill number 4,034, requested by Steve Elman, sponsored by Terry Hollander, an ordinance amending the 2013 budget of St. Charles County, Missouri as adopted by ordinance 12-096 by transferring funds between categories within the budget of the Counselors Department and by appropriating additional revenues by providing an associated supplemental appropriation to the general fund budget for facilities maintenance, indigent program, 2700, and levy district payments.
Okay, questions or comments on Bill 4,034? Okay, move on to Bill 4,035.
Bill number 4,035, requested by Wayne Anthony, sponsored by John White, an ordinance amending the zoning district map of the County of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from R1E, Single Family Residential District, and C1, Neighborhood Commercial District, to C2, General Commercial District as per application 20924. to C2, General Commercial District, as per application 20924.
Okay, questions on bill number 4,035?
Mr. Chairman, I went and visited his property, and for the use that the person wants to use it for, it does make sense. It would add more parking to his facility, which is much needed, and I don't think this, the area that's being changed would hardly ever be used for residential use anyway. So it makes good sense, I believe.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, moving on to bill 4,036 for introduction.
Bill number 4,036, requested by Wayne Anthony, sponsored by Joe Brazel, and ordinance granting conditional use permit 21008 for a telecommunications tower 150 feet in height to Donald J. Twelman and Dolores M. Twelman, revocable living trust.
Okay, questions and comments on bill 4,036? Yes, Mr. Cronin?
As a frequent critic of telecommunications towers, I feel it's time to be, for me to turn the page on this one and just say, this was, this is, if you're ever going to have another one in this county, this is the one we ought to be approving. It was approved in 2011. I watched it through planning and zoning. No neighbors, no people are complaining about it, and better yet, it's right next to a water tower, so it's not very obtrusive to anybody. So while I've given these towers heck before, because they were in residential neighbors, neighborhoods, this one is a good place for a cellphone tower to be located. And I think I went to those folks to tell them that, that try to find more sites next to water towers instead of in subdivisions, and the things will be a lot better.
Okay, any other questions or comments on bill 4,036? Okay, seeing none, we move on to bill 4,037.
Bill number 4,037, requested by Belinda Little, sponsored by council as a whole, and ordinance amending sections 115.050F, 115.222, 115.224, 115.320.1, 115.320.6, 115.410.3, 115.420, 115.660.6, 115.670, 115.705.83, 115.710, 115.720, 115.768D, and enacting new sections 115.722, 115.724, ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, OSCCMO, all concerning the personnel administration plan, including but not limited to benefits.
Okay, questions or comments on bill number 4,037? I assume these are all just changes to the personnel code that you're working with?
They are the usual changes that we go through each year as we're preparing for looking at what's been in the code, what we need to have. It's, you can see on page four, there's a small change to how an employee uses the extended medical leave, and that runs through the next. There's also then the conversion. Probably the most important thing in this bill really sits on page eight, where we describe the Kildon the Line of Duty benefit that we talked about during the budget. And then also the fact that we lay out the new salary match for the, for the 457 on page 10. No, the insurance has already been done. And then finally, in this bill, at the very end almost, you will see that, if you remember in last year's pay plan, for the first time, we set up the elected officials line item that explained how salaries were being calculated based on what the employees had already gotten. This is taking the amount that was set in last year's budget, and it's implementing it for the elected officials who will be elected in the November 2014 elections. You're required to have those salaries set before the first day of February of 2014. So this allows you to simply set those salaries. And we do have one additional section, because you remember last year, there was no salary set for sheriff.
Correct.
And that was something that you all wanted to look at when you got to this year. And so there is a recommendation in here for a sheriff salary at $76,715. That new department had, beginning January of 2015, will have a 43-person department under them, and that will be slightly less than some of the other departments that are that size, or even a little bit smaller. So it reflects the change in duties of the sheriff to having the court security services and the civil process folks.
Okay.
So those are kind of the highlights, sorry.
That's, that's very, that's very informative. Questions or comments on, anything Mr. Slakem said? Okay, we move on to bill number 4,038.
Bill number 4,038, requested by Julie Eckstein, sponsored by Terry Hollander, and ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute an animal control facility lease agreement with the City of St. Peters.
Okay, questions or comments on bill 4,038? Okay, seeing none, that concludes our bills for introduction. Are there any bills to be removed from the table? Okay, seeing none, we get down to announcements. Yes, Mr. Hammond?
Well, before the meeting, I was asked if I was interested in serving on the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I never answered that. So if there's anybody else that is interested in serving on the Planning and Zoning Commission...
You come highly recommended, highly recommended by Mr. Cronin.
We think you do a great job.
The pay's going to be better next year, too.
Well, with that, I would not, if, if I'm going to be serving under her, I would not request additional funds for myself.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
As a perfect example of the fact that sometimes the best thing you do is what you don't do, I just want to congratulate the council and previous councils for never approving red light cameras.
Feel good about that?
Everybody knows I'm not a fan of them.
We need not ask why, Joe.
That story's got a lot of play, though.
Yes. Okay, any other announcements?
Yes, sir, I have one.
Yes.
Next week's, or two weeks from now's meeting, I'll have a resolution I've been working on. I didn't get much done with Harold and Joanne, because Harold was on vacation, but I just want everybody to be aware of it, and I've got a pack of information that you can take with you. About a mile that way, there's a smoldering landfill that's been burning for three years, and it's called Westlake Quarry. And just a few hundred feet from that smoldering landfill is a bunch of pretty highly radioactive waste. There's been a new report by a former congressional investigator that on that landfill, I've got a copy of it here, and in these other sites like this, like the Weldon Springs site in this county, the US Army Corps of Engineers and Department of Energy have teamed up to investigate and to find out if those sites need to be cleaned up. And right now, what's happening is you have a private, far-profit landfill company that's working under a little bit of state and EPA guidance, and I think the people that really need to look at this is the Department of Army Corps of Engineers and Department of Energy. So the resolution will basically ask that our congressional delegation ask the US Army Corps of Engineers to investigate the situation. I'll have that thing done now. I'll send you all the information electronically, but there's a lot of reading to be done, so I brought packs I'll have at the end of the counter, if you want to do your homework the next couple of weeks.
Okay. Look forward to that. Any other announcements? Yes, Mr. White?
Another one, I just want to let everybody know about the Sounds of the Season that's going to take place at the Hardee's Museum, and that's going to take place on the 15th from 1:30 to 4:30, and it also gives everybody a chance to visit the museum. And the other thing I want to announce was that if there isn't another Steve Elman, it must be ours that has a birthday on the 6th.
Well, we would like to congratulate the county executive.
Actually, what?
There is another Steve Elman.
And is it his birthday?
I'm guilty of that.
Okay.
We were going to sing Happy Birthday.
Thank you for not saying which one it is.
Terry.
We were asked not to. For not saying which birthday.
Yes, Mr. Chairman?
Once again, I will remind everybody of the huge Maces Days Parade down in Defiance on Saturday.
You got any balloons for that?
And there will be Christmas Walk in Augusta on Friday night, which is actually really nice. It's Friday, this Friday on the 6th, and next Friday on the 13th in Augusta. And the Defiance Christmas Walk, or Christmas Parades on Saturday at noon.
A good place to visit. Okay. Any other announcements? Okay, meeting is adjourned. Thank you.